Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the special meeting of the MWPA Advisory Technical Committee. Today is Tuesday, April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and it is one oh four on my clock. Can we get a roll call, please?
Certainly. Starting with Bellinas, Steve Marcot.
Here.
For the city of Larkspur, I'm sorry, for the city of Larkspur, Chair Martin.
Yes, here.
For the city of Mill Valley, Tom Welsh.
Here.
For the city of Santa Fel, Quinn Gardner.
Here.
For Marin County Fire, Jordan Reeser. I don't have Jordan just yet. For the Inverness Public Utilities District, you have Jim Fox switching over here to panelist online, so he should be joining us shortly. For Kentfield Fire, Larry Pacero.
Yep.
For the Marinwood Community Services District, Luke Fretwell. For Muir Beach Community Services District, David Taylor.
Yeah.
For the Nevada Fire District, Lynn Osgood.
Present.
For the Sleepy Hollow Fire District, John Hanley. For Southern Marin Fire, Fred Hilliard.
Here.
For Stinson Beach, Daniel Blair. For the Town of Corta Madera, Todd Lando.
Present.
For the Town of Fairfax, Lauren Umbertis. And it looks like we'll bring Lauren over as well. Looks like we're having a little bit of trouble getting Jim over, but he should be here in just a second. For the Town of Ross, Rob Bashinon.
Present.
For the Town of San Anselmo, Sean Condry. And starting with our at-large members from Marin County Parks, Jim Chaka.
Here.
Or do we have anyone here for PG&E? Doesn't look like it. For State Parks, Cindy Schaefer. For Ecologically Sound Practices, Belle Cole. I do see Belle here joining us online. For the Golden Gate National Recreation Area and the Point Reyes National Seashore, do we have Greg Jones? For the Marin Municipal Water District, do we have Sean Horn? For University of California Cooperative Extension, do we have Tori Norville? And for Firesick Marin, do we have Rich Shortall? And it looks like we just got Jordan Reeser as well. It looks like Lauren and Jim are both over as panelists as well.
Lauren from Fairfax here, yes. Excuse me. Thank you. That gives us a quorum for today. Moving to item number three, are there any adjustments to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to item number four, which is open time for public expression. The public is welcome to the, to address the Advisory Technical Committee at this time on matters not on the agenda that are within the jurisdiction of the committee. Please be advised at pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five four dot two, the committee is not permitted to discuss or take any action on matters not on the agenda. Comments may be no longer than three minutes and should be respectful to the community. Do we have any members of the public that wish to speak?
If there are any members of the public wishing to speak on the current agenda item, the open for public expression, please raise your hand in the reactions. And so there are no hands for a public comment.
Well, thank you. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the committee. Moving on to item number five, Planning and Program Managers Report. We have a report.
I do not have a report at this time since I gave a report last time we met, so that's it.
Perfect. Okay, moving on to item number six, which is our consent calendar, which is minutes of the April fifth, two thousand and twenty-three Advisory Technical Committee. If there are no adjustments to the minutes, can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second. Okay, so Fred Hilliard and Larry Pacero. Can I get a roll call, please?
Certainly, starting with Bellinas Fire District, Steve Marcot.
Aye.
For the city of Mill Valley, Tom Welch.
Aye.
For the city of Santa Fel, Quinn Gardner.
Aye.
For Marin County Fire, Jordan Reeser.
Yes.
For Inverness Public Utilities District, Jim Fox.
Aye.
For the Kentfield Fire, Larry Pacero.
Yes.
For Marinwood Community Services District, Luke Fretwell, does not look like Luke is with us. For Muir Beach Community Services District, David Taylor.
Aye.
For the Nevada Fire District, Lynn Osgood.
Aye.
For Sleepy Hollow Fire District, John Hanley. For Southern Marin Fire, Fred Hilliard.
Aye.
For Stinson Beach, Daniel Blair. And it looks like we actually have Jesse Perry here from Stinson Beach. Jesse will be joining us in just a bit. For the Town of Corta Madera, Todd Lando.
Aye.
For the Town of Fairfax, Lauren Umbertis.
Aye.
For the Town of Ross, Rob Bashinon.
Aye.
For the Town of San Anselmo, Sean Condry. It doesn't look like Sean is with us. And for the city of Larkspur, Chair Martin.
Aye.
And that looks like a unanimous vote of everyone here in attendance.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to item number seven, which is an action item, which is the draft fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four work plan and budget. Do we have a staff report on this?
Yes, we do. So today, we're going to take a little bit of time to talk about where we are on the work plan. We'll review what we've done so far. We'll share results of the ATC Ad Hoc Subcommittee Meetings and recent discussions, especially results of an April fourteenth meeting. And then we'll work with the full ATC for a discussion and vote to recommend our suite of proposals to the Operations Committee with input from the ATC and the ATC Ad Hoc Subcommittee. Just to note, some of the next steps will be potentially continued meeting of the ATC Ad Hoc as the Operations Committee finalizes the work plan and budget, if so desired, and the operations ad hoc will continue to meet. And the Operations Committee will meet on May third to take a vote on the work plan and budget and whether or not it should go to the board for consideration. So I won't go through all of this slide because we've seen much of this before, but I wanted to emphasize how much coordination has happened in March and April and how many great conversations have taken place, both in these public meetings in March to review the JPA-wide proposals and in these public meetings in April to review zone-specific proposals. The ATC Ad Hoc Subcommittee has met four times. The Operations Ad Hoc Committee has met a couple of times as well and will continue to meet in April. And this just really represents a huge amount of collaboration and brainstorming and input from everyone, so a big thank you to all involved. I want to take a moment to highlight the input from the ATC Ad Hoc Subcommittee. This Subcommittee includes Fred Hilliard, Lynn Osgood, Quinn Gardner, Todd Lando, and Lauren Umbertis. And some of the topics that came up during our April fourteenth meeting included how to handle the priority funding idea. So again, the, within the JPA language, eighty percent of the core revenue generated in any one zone needs to be spent within that zone averaged over five years. That does leave some flexibility for that twenty percent to be allocated as needed according to ATC and Operations Committee priorities. And some of the priorities we discussed were projects, areas where revenue may be low, costs associated with kind of regulatory requirements would be high. Some areas where risk is very high and ATC feels that there's a great need for additional effort to be placed there. Reacting to results of some of the studies that are underway, such as the effort to better understand public education outreach, the evacuation studies, the parcel risk assessment study, the shaded fuel break study that's also being conducted by the same group. In the future, I see those as, you know, potentially playing a big role in these conversations. Currently, those are draft and not a huge part of the conversation, but the group did discuss a few ideas in relation to how to, how to allocate that twenty percent funding. Specifically, the proposal in the coastal zone that reflects kind of a scoping and environmental compliance for future coastal work. That proposal stood out because of the low revenue generated in that area and the high cost associated with doing work in that area and the high risk. The group also thought that once funding was placed towards that proposal, the remaining zones could, you could allocate the remaining funding to the zones and that would largely address the funding requests for the other proposals that were considered for the additional priority funding. So that kind of scenario is addressed in the slides to follow and in your board packet. So in your board packet, you have a staff report and you have some budget sheets that include that kind of revised core budget. Also want to emphasize that all the proposals are public and online. They're all available for anyone and on the committee or the public to review. We also discussed input regarding one of the proposals and specifically, well, several proposals, but specifically discussed Nevada's proposal to create a separate chipper program and whether or not that would then conflict with MWPA's chipper program and had a discussion about that. So at this point, I'd like to invite Todd Lando and others on the ATC Ad Hoc to supplement anything that I said, add your thoughts, anything that I missed.
I would just, you know, emphasize it was a robust discussion. We dug into these topics and, you know, I think it gave us all an opportunity to get to more, more thought outside of the committee meeting individually to, you know, craft some ideas that we might discuss here and at the next ad hoc meeting. So I think it was our most productive meeting yet.
Yeah, I'd agree with Todd and I'd probably add too, I think part of the decision to essentially only call the two hundred K for the coastal zone as the priority project this year was also kind of based on the timing of when the eighty-twenty split got announced. And I think there was pretty good agreement that moving forward, we want to think about more collaborative projects that would be good priority projects to request funding for. So that'll be something that we work on between now and next work cycle, work plan cycle, basically, so that we might see a little more shifting of that twenty percent per se, but it'll be kind of based on collaborative projects that are formed. And I think that'll be a great opportunity to show the collaboration within the MWPA.
Great, thank you. Anyone else from the ad hoc? No obligation, but. Okay. Well, great. Let's move on to the next slide then. So with that scenario in mind, I've got a column here showing what the core budget for each of the zones would be if the group chooses to go in that direction. So if only the coastal zone project for scoping and environmental compliance for some sort of suite of projects within the coastal zone moves forward, then the core budgets for the five zones would increase. And so the following slides just include core proposals and that portion of the budget spread, spreadsheets that would be changed by that decision. So here's the West Marin Zone. So here I've increased the amount allocated towards this core proposal with twenty, with the two hundred thousand for priority funding. And that's because I think the actual cost is probably more than two hundred thousand for coastal act compliance and SEQA. But because of the revenue going back to the zone, the priority funding would only be two hundred thousand and there would be another fifty thousand available for that project. So there, so there remains about seventeen thousand dollars or so in budget that could be distributed to other core projects in the zone. In the Central Marin Zone, that change allows for about five thousand dollars in excess to be redistributed to other core projects. In Nevada, again, Nevada will be kind of zeroing out their budget to make sure it all balances, but that provides additional funding towards core projects and less of a difference here to, to distribute among the, less of a deficit to distribute among the core projects. In the Santa Fel Zone, that makes it a little easier to balance their budget, just one ninety-four over budget here in the end. And in the Southern Marin Zone, that leaves about two hundred and twenty-eight in excess in terms of budget to redistribute to core projects. So as you can see, that does give a little more breathing room in terms of budgets for core projects for each of the zones. If the ATC decides to go in that direction. So my recommendation at this point is to discuss this approach and see if this approach is something that you would support. Provide any feedback to myself, provide some input on not only the twenty percent priority funding, but also what input you'd like to convey to the Operations Committee in terms of general approach, the twenty percent priority funding and any particular proposals that you'd like to comment on. And the ATC Ad Hoc Subcommittee specifically called out the Nevada Chipper Program as one project to provide comment on. And then at that point, we can discuss a vote of the committee. So open to any questions, discussion?
I think maybe it was appropriate to bring this up a moment ago when you asked if there was any last comments from the ad hoc, but, but we did discuss at the ad hoc sort of, you know, how we can better prepare and propose projects for priority funding in the future. And I think, you know, we had already started the budgeting process when this concept came up. But I think it's critical for all of us that there be a specific budget category that is priority funding for us to choose core priority funding, you know, when we're proposing projects. Without that, it's, you know, it's left the way it is now, which was any, any overage in our budget was assumed to be a priority request that would be then ostensibly spread between all of our core proposals. When I think each of the zones would probably really benefit from making a specific request for priority funding tied to a specific project. On the example, you know, I used, it's really relevant to the fire service and that oftentimes, you know, that we, we propose projects, we propose funding for things that are public safety related and fund other projects first, when reality, we ought to be proposing and prioritizing the critical projects first and leaving the, you know, the chance in the budget to projects that are less critical, but that's sort of the opposite of the approach we, we took by default this year.
Yeah, I think that's great input. Thank you.
So can you help me understand the Nevada Chipper Program? Is that a value-added thing or what's coming from that?
We realized that Nevada was proposing a separate chipper program and pull out of the countywide chipper program pretty late in the game. The chipper program for the MWPA, we had already gone through the RFP process and planning process and budgeting process for that and started signups for that program. So we actually have a number of residents in Nevada signed up for the, the countywide chipper program. And then heard back from, from Nevada that they would like to have their own separate program. And so then the discussions began. But so the concern would be, well, the concern would be, you know, canceling chipper program activities in Nevada on behalf of MWPA and kind of logistics and kind of a lack of trust building for setting up a program and then canceling. I also think that, you know, there could be, if Nevada has additional chipper needs, I think we can work through, you know, why the program wasn't working currently and maybe make some improvements in terms of spreading the word in Nevada. And then it may be that Nevada could continue additional chipper funding to supplement the countywide program and see if there's, if there are gaps to be filled through Nevada. But I would invite Lynn to talk about what their motivation is and what their needs are.
Thank you. So last year, the core chipper program encumbered approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of Nevada portion funding. MWPA reported back that a hundred and sixty-seven thousand was expended on Nevada. That should leave approximately a hundred and eighty-three thousand to assign to MWPA managed chipper program for this year. The approximate three hundred and fifty for twenty-three, twenty-four can be assigned directly to our needs. So we didn't use all of it for this past year. So we also looked at some of the statistics from last year or this year. Nevada JP program had three hundred and eighty-six pickups, eight hundred and eighty-eight point five cubic yards of unchipped material removed and a hundred and sixty-seven thousand expended to support the program. That's through the MWPA. Nevada last year also had a total pickup locations of two hundred and fifty-three locations, total cubic yards of chip material, fifteen hundred and eighty-five yards. Total number of days spent shipping was forty-four days. Total dollars spent a hundred and thirty-five thousand twenty-four. So we have a very robust program. We have contracts with three different contractors. And we prefer to keep it within our jurisdiction.
So you're, you're trying to solve a problem of just managing yourself versus?
Well, I wouldn't say it was a problem at all. We've done a really good job of managing that program.
Got it. Okay.
And it's, it's part of our overall fire adaptive community that we have is in that we go out and we assign our assessments and then at the same time provide the chipper days as well as the grants and then the shaded field break. So it's one big package.
I'd like to add at first, I really appreciate that Nevada was willing to negotiate and sit down and discuss this really candidly with us at the ad hoc committee. But I didn't bring up at the time, it kind of just clarified in my mind after we met, that the town of Corta Madera is a good example of a community that ran a chipper program successfully prior to the passage of MWPA using local funds, using Measure F funds from the town of Corta Madera. And when, when the MWPA was created and Measure C passed, we looked at it, the MWPA was offering a dramatically different chipper program that offered services unlike what the town of Corta Madera had run in the past. However, we still see the need to add supplemental funding sometimes for the chipper program, more like what they used to do, which was, I think, real similar to Nevada, which was a central point drop-off. When we do that, we feel that we have to fund that through the local funds, through, not through MWPA local funds, but through Measure F, because that was an existing program, just like what Nevada Fire District ran. And that, this is critical, the MWPA, it was very clear to the voters that, that this was to create new programs and new funding and that existing programs could not be funded by Measure C dollars. So I think it's pretty important that we, we look at that. I hope that, that Corta Madera, the way we've managed it, it may be, you know, something that you could follow for some inspiration there. But I think, you know, we look back, we know that Nevada Fire does run a fantastic chipper program, has for decades. I was involved with it for some time before the MWPA existed. We can't fund that with Measure C dollars. That needs to come from the fire department budget from local, local funds outside of Measure C if we're going to continue doing that kind of supplemental program. I, you know, and I see an opportunity, just like, just like we're doing in Corta Madera, I think, think that we should do that and we should provide the added service to the taxpayers, to the residents, provide above and beyond what the MWPA program provides, which is a different style of chipper pickup than we've ever provided in Marin. But if we're going to continue to do these supplemental programs, it shouldn't come from Measure C funding, in my opinion.
Todd, it's interesting because I think Santa Fel ran a very small chipper program before the MWPA, and I think that's a big distinction. With MWPA funds, we've participated in the, the countywide MWPA chipper program, but then we've also put additional funds towards additional chipper days, so we could do a little more on, more on-demand service, tie it into our direct assistance program, et cetera. So I do think it's important to distinguish that while there were chipper programs before the MWPA, at least in our case, and I believe in other cases, they have drastically expanded with MWPA dollars. So I don't think we're subplanning there. I just want to be careful about kind of how we're phrasing that. Because we are just able to supplement that more and we never had the scale of like direct assistance programs or outreach or education we do with the MWPA. So inherently, that demand for chipper services has also increased. So I do think that there's a good model to be set of how we do a, a uniform. Everyone has the opportunity to sign up for certain days through the, you know, the chipper day program, but that there might also be availability to do additional funding as different jurisdictions or zones see fit based on the demand that they know exists within their agency. And I know Nevada just sees a little bit different of a demand, although certainly their model in terms of kind of picking an area, hitting it with a hundred percent of everything is different than I know we're doing in Santa Fel.
We are also chipping all year long as well. It's not just a seasonal. It's all year long we've been chipping.
I don't think there's any disagreement on this in general, but, but I think my point is more or less that, let's say, you know, that whatever the city is, whether it's Nevada, Santa Fel, or Corta Madera, if we were obligating a hundred thousand dollars out of the town's budget, the fire district's budget, but prior to the passage of MWPA, we are obligated to continue that program. That was an existing program and we can't suddenly start providing only chipper programs from here, you know, without having a real serious talk about what it was that, that we, we voted for when we passed Measure C. I think that that's an important point.
Bill, Bill Val has done the exact same thing, where we've kept that funding that was been in existence for decades going forward.
Measure, Measure C was not supposed to free up funding for the, the existing agencies that were already spending money on fire prevention efforts to use for other things, you know, and I, in the ad hoc committee, I use the example of the libraries. Couldn't be a bigger supporter of libraries, but this was not an opportunity for us to shift the funding for the, the, you know, the Fairfax chipper program into the libraries. We had, we were obligated and we told the taxpayers that we would continue the funding for the existing program. I, and, and, you know, I think that really is my point.
So just to be clear, we did not have an existing chipper program at Nevada. That's not something that we had. We had vegetation management projects and programs, but we didn't have an allocated chipper program where we provided that service. And we are proposing, since we didn't spend all the money for this past year for chipper days through MWPA funding, to take the rest of that money that we never used for chipper days and allocate that back into the fund.
And Todd, didn't we do chipper days five, six years ago in Nevada? You set it up?
I think, yeah, those were actually funded through a grant, a PG&E grant by Firesafe Marin, though, so.
And we have a few speakers on Zoom and I'm wondering if Stephen Peters could help answer a question regarding dollars spent in Nevada over this last fiscal year and whether or not we know how many dollars have been spent yet.
Hi there. Good to see everyone. We do, I'd like to, though, direct us more towards dollars spent per pickup in Nevada versus the greater program. I think it just speaks a little bit more to the, the efficiency. Neither program is bad. I agree with what's been said. Local programs are absolutely essential, but they both do have slightly different roles. We're able to offer much wider service to areas that don't have local programs. And in that, our costs per pickups are significantly lower than Nevada's are. And so not only can we offer pickups to everyone in the JPA at, I believe it's two hundred dollars per pickup less than Nevada has been offering. But we can get to communities that don't have those abilities to put on their own programs. But if you, if we want to have a conversation about spending per zone and go more in depth, I'm more than happy to answer any questions anyone has on that.
Well, I'm wondering if we know how much has been spent and how much the roller would be for Nevada or any zone. Do we? Well, I'm wondering if we know how much has been spent and how much the rollover would be for Nevada or any zone. Do we have that or is it a little early to?
It's 7,000 that.
Well, it's, it is, it is currently, but, but because we're, we are running on a fiscal calendar, we still have three more years, months of chipping to do in this season. So it's a little hard to tell how much that rollover be at the end of the fiscal year right now, because we will be chipping and getting that program running up in about a month from now. So as of now, that's how much has been expended, but that's not the final number.
Okay, thank you.
Fred, you had a question?
Yeah, so, you know, I think it's really important that, you know, we understand this. Like, for instance, the Southern Marin and Mill Valley, we've had, we've used MST funding for Mill Valley, we have our own funding, measure U for chipper days. And one of the important things with separation between that and the MWPA is so that we're not supplanting funding and, and we're showing the taxpayer that, hey, you know, we're using this funding as we said we were. And this MWPA funding is in addition to that program. So it's a different program, like, you know, like Stephen said, they're totally different. The other thing that's really important is that we understand that the money that the chipper program gets is just like the 20% that they're taking out of core. It's a, it's supposed to be used throughout the county. And my example is what we just talked about. Why we're funding West Marin. You know, there's areas in the county that don't have the tax base that some of the other areas do. And, but they need that support. They need the funding in order to do these bigger programs like chipper or, you know, vegetation clearing. So when we talk about getting money and this is, you know, this should be going to Southern Marin or Nevada or whatever, there, there has to be some understanding that there's going to be some money that jurisdictions that we're just going to all pay to like this 20% and the chipper program that we just, we, we need to, it's, it's, it's to support the entire county as a whole and not an individual jurisdiction. And so, again, with us, we support the, the chipper program through MWPA and it's a marketing piece as well. And we want the taxpayers to understand that we're, you know, again, the MWPA money is being used for chippers as well as Southern Marin and Mill Valley, which are different programs. That's all I have.
Belle, you had a question?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm not on chipper day, but I'm back on priority funding. Enthusiastic about the direction that the ad hoc committee is going. I just wanted to ask a little bit more about the 200,000 for West Marin coastal zone. Is that sufficient for, what, what will that? How will that help them? And is that sufficient for what they need? Because there is a lot of certain amount of underfunding in that area and I just want to be sure that, that this really will make a difference and that it will lead to more funding afterwards.
Yeah, thank you for that, Belle. So this funding would go towards biological resources studies and other studies and consultant costs for scoping out where the priorities are for our member agencies in the coastal zone and doing the SEQA compliance for hypothetical projects that haven't been scoped out yet. Generally, a lot of that work would likely take place on non-federal land adjacent to roads and adjacent to communities. And that funding would go a long way towards coastal act compliance. We don't really know what that process is going to look like yet. If we would need to apply for one permit or, or a series of permits. We are in the middle of, of working with coastal commission staff on a public works plan to help draft kind of a streamlined process for coastal act permitting. That process is, is taking time, mostly due to lack of staff with the coastal commission. So the ecologists that we were working with originally has left and the, now the planner that we were working with just left as well. So it'll be a lot of back and forth and a lot of time. But we're hoping to get a, something in place through this proposal to do the additional SEQA and at least one or two coastal act permit applications in the coastal zone. So that project implementation can take place in future years with future budgets.
So the effect of the 200,000 is what you just described. That's will be the use of the 200,000.
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, you had a question?
Not necessarily a question. I just wanted to state that I re, I really appreciate the robust discussion about chipping. I think that it's one of the key measures that we should have in that it reduces tons per acre off the hillside. Which as we know, if fuel weather and topography, we're, we're modifying the fuel aspects because it's hard to modify the others. So I appreciate it and I think that staying focused on shipping and hauling. The other good reason is too, as Todd's pointed out to me here and here again, is that a lot of the land in Marin is private. So this is an opportunity to pull tons per acre from private land as well. So I appreciate it.
And I had a comment, just as a reminder of core funding for JPA wide projects. Aside, after you take or MWPA is allotted their 10% administrative function, then we do countywide or proposals or projects. For example, would be the chipper program, the D space app that is used or the software program and so forth. And those are intended to be utilized and benefit the entire 17 member agencies, correct?
Correct, yeah.
So that funding, we shouldn't be looking at that funding as it wasn't spent all within my zone. It should be looked at, was it spent appropriately countywide?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have.
Probably a question for Stephen, recognizing that we do still have three months or so left in the fiscal year, how much is left in this fiscal chipper, fiscal year chipper budget? And was that accounted for in the budget request for next year if it won't all be spent?
It was accounted for that. I don't have that answer right on at my hands right now, but I'm happy to get you that and provide that to everyone here.
I think that'd be helpful. And I, it might be more kind of building off of, of the, of Chief Martin's comment. How does it work if an entity doesn't support a JPA wide program? Like if, if the J, like what is the structure for what that looks like if the JPA budget gets adopted and voted on as a whole, or is it item by item?
Uh, we don't really, that's uncharted territory in terms of how to do the budgeting for a JPA wide proposal.
Do we have any other comments from board members? Seeing none, can we see if we've got any public comment on this first?
If there are any members of the public wishing to speak on the current agenda item, please raise your hand in the reactions. And for those joining by phone, please press our nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute yourself. And sir, we do not have any hands for public comment.
Well, thank you, Martina. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the committee. Are there any further comments or questions from the committee? And question for staff, what is? So today, the action item would be accept a motion on approving the proposed work plan and budget.
Yes, correct, with input from the ATC and ATC ad hoc subcommittee. So any remaining questions don't need to be resolved today. They can be conveyed to the operations committee for further discussion.
Okay. With that, I'd like to go ahead and accept a motion to approve the 2324 work plan and proposed budget with input from the ATC ad hoc committee.
So moved.
So it was moved by Fred Hilliard, Southern Marin, and second by Quinn Gardner with Santa Fel. Can we get a vote, please?
Certainly, starting with Bolinas Fire District, Steve Mercott.
Aye.
With the city of Mill Valley, Tom Welch.
Yes.
For the city of Santa Fel, Quinn Gardner.
Aye.
For Marin County Fire, Jordan Reeser.
Yes.
For Inverness Public Utilities District, Jim Fox.
Aye.
For Kentfield Fire, Larry Pacero.
Yes.
I do not believe Luke Fretwell with Marinwood has joined us. Premier Beach Community Services District, David Taylor.
Aye.
For the Nevada Fire District, Lynn Osgood.
Aye.
For Sleepy Olive Fire District, John Hanley.
Aye.
For Southern Marin Fire, Fred Hilliard.
Yes.
I do not believe we have Daniel Blair from Stinson Beach. Oh, but we do have Jesse Perry.
Yes.
For the town of Corder Madera, Todd Lando.
Aye.
For the town of Fairfax, Lauren and Bertis.
Aye.
The town of Ross, Rob Bashanon.
Yes.
And I do not believe we have Sean or anyone from the town of San and Sommo. And last but not least, for the city of Larkspur, Chair Martin.
Aye.
And that is a unanimous vote of all in attendance.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for that. We'll go ahead and move on to item number eight. Are there any requests for future agenda items from the committee? Mr. Pacero?
Is there any way, the three slides that you had up at the beginning and we're really good about framing out and hitting some of those project points about what we were trying to accomplish today. Can you include those in the packet or can you send those separately to the board members before the meeting or after the meeting?
Yeah, absolutely.
As we report back to our constituents and chiefs, it's good intel to have. And I think that was a good job of wrapping it all up.
Yeah, absolutely. I'd be happy to do that. And I think all of the past slides are up online attached to the, those items on the past agendas as well.
Okay, with that, before we adjourn, I just kind of want to thank members of the ad hoc committee for all the work that you guys did in reviewing the work plan and making proposals and recommendations. So thank you again. And then thank you for everyone on the ATC committee for the special meeting today. And then thank you for staff for, for facilitating. With that, it takes us to item number nine, meeting adjournment. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.